Call the meeting. July thirteenth, six P M. City Council, Oak Ridge. And also on the Zoom platform, hybrid. Uh, first order of business for the regions, please.
But the reasons to apply the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. Any counselor has any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, isn't it the roll call?
It sure is. Thanks. Is Jack in this room or that you, James, for calling?
It's us. She's on.
Yes, okay. Jack, would you go to roll, please?
Mary Cushing?
Here.
Councilor Kingian?
Here.
Councilor Hooker?
Here.
Councilor Hollis?
Yeah.
Councilor Johnson?
Here.
Councilor Hooker?
Here.
Councilor Carmen?
Here. Thank you, Colleen. In our additions, corrections, or adjustments, anything? Uh, nothing heard?
I'm curious if we're gonna set an end to time for ten.
I was hoping an hour, but.
That's what I was hoping for, too.
We can always schedule another one if there's more work to be done.
I was just making sure we're all on the same page.
Everyone okay with that now? Yeah. All right. Public comment. So there's nobody in the room or the public, but. Anybody online wanna speak out? Ms. Hammond, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Trudy, seven, six, three, four, nine, Willamette Way. And I was just wondering if, um, oh, the city of Oak Ridge renewed their police services contract for the twenty-two. Since the, um, that's the one I think expired June of twenty-three. Is that correct?
Is that the dispatch contract or contract with Westford or?
Contract with Westford for policing services?
Yeah, that's been.
That's renewed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Zoom public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to. See mayor comments announcements again, um, tomorrow night, wildfire safety night, Friday, five to seven. Uh, there'll be food, hot dogs, and watermelon, and a lot of partners there that will be handing out great information and. Great resource for information. So, uh, there is a flyer available. And, uh, please, uh, come on out and, uh, learn something. Any council comments or announcements? All right, nothing heard. Uh, eight point one, work session regarding the council rules of procedure. So, James, I say you wanna probably just step through the written feedback you got. And do you have one you wanna start with, that you've already queued up, or do you?
Sure. Uh, maybe you could go through. Some of the typos. And by. By.
Okay, um, you, are you, are you gonna pull it up on the screen? Is that what you're thinking of doing, or is doing it real time on your computer?
I was gonna do it real time on my computer, and I can tell you what page.
Okay.
We're talking about.
Yep.
So, page two. Under. Form. So, section two A. Councilor Kingian suggested. Uh, possibly adding the word the before mayor. So that it's clear that the members of the council are the six city councillors and the mayor. So we know there's just one mayor rather than potentially to be read as six city councillors and mayor.
Why not put one in parentheses like it is?
I, I suggested that.
Is there a city out there with no one mayor?
Yeah.
Whack your third.
Well, I guess because we have a number before city.
Yes.
The objections to that? So you're gonna put this still as track changes, so everyone will know what we've kind of agreed to, and then highlight stuff that still is under discussion? Okay. Great.
And change the indentation on that paper.
Yeah. Those kind of things threaten me not.
Indentation.
Were the members of the council, for some reason, those indented, shouldn't be.
Where are you at?
Are you at same line, A?
The space after A, an extra space. Maybe, I don't know, does it not show up on the electronic version?
Yeah. And then another indentation on page three. Off there's the use doesn't.
Right? So what I'll do is just have people speak out if they're in disagreement with anything we're going through here, these type of.
Yes, it is either to just. You go through the typos and the suggestions at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, I would, yeah.
Uh, so now we're on page three, under city recorder. Under city recorder, item A two. Signing orders on the treasury. Suggest we change that. To sign them all. Sign all orders. I think that should still be consistent with city charters. City charter specifies that city reporter signs. Orders on the treasury, but to change council rules to signs all orders, all orders would include.
You know.
Orders on treasury, so.
Oh, I thought it, I thought it was, I made the suggestion because I thought it was in the charter as all, did not.
Charter says orders of treasury.
Okay, language.
I know.
Uh, but elsewhere in the council rules of procedure, it does say, uh, for orders of resolution, it says the city reporter will sign.
So what other types of orders does our city require? What are they required to sign other than?
Minutes, resolutions, ordinances.
It actually says in the charter, and sign all orders on the treasure. Yeah, so that was why I suggested adding the word all.
What if we said sign orders as referenced in the city charter?
Or sign all orders as required by the charter in.
Yeah, I like that. So as required per charter and state law? Something to that effect.
Yeah, so sign all orders as required by the city charter and state law.
Got it. Thank you.
Questionable comments, uh, city attorney, city attorney and any means of the council. First comment shouldn't be there on request. Indian. Written or oral. I think the only one. Definitely this, there's the one after council.
Yeah, you could get rid of the last one, but you're okay, I think.
So what's it gonna say reworded?
The same thing I just got. I just got rid of the first comment after the word cancel.
Okay.
Uh, the next suggestion. Under agendas. Which I'm sorry, it's on the, yeah, page four. Uh, suggestion. That the agenda. And materials come out five days, seven days preceding the meeting. Obviously, I'm in support of that.
Well, I have some concerns, because that makes you putting it out on Sunday or Saturday night. To me, it's a nice goal to have, to have it out seven days prior, so you could have it on Friday and review it over the weekend. So I understand that sometimes business gets in the way and it just happens, so.
And it, and it is, it just says reasonable steps. It's like it says, try and do that. The way it is, since it's this aspirational.
Any concerns there? We've got a, as is.
Um, I prefer five days, but I'm not, I mean, if the rest of the council prefers seven, fine, leaving it. I did wanna talk about the last sentence on that. Unless exceptional circumstances arrive, and no instance saw the city, saw the city administrator fail to provide the city council with agendas and informational materials needed for council meetings, at least three days. For the council meeting. Um, I think this comes up a lot, so I personally think we should scratch that entire last sentence and change it to something more flexible, like council may consider special circumstances.
If we can change the world, we're exceptional to special. Bring that show.
Well, it just comes off all hard and gruff that, that we're not going to do this. In reality, as we do do that.
What I actually feel like, um. Either the stuff should be to us at least three days before the meeting, or we shouldn't get it at all. It should just get stripped from the agenda. I personally cannot fit. On most instances, time enough in my life, to study stuff the night before the meeting, or the day of the meeting, or even Tuesday before the meeting. I feel like we should have it, or it shouldn't, it shouldn't be.
Pushing another agenda.
Yeah, we should go to the next meeting.
What if it's something that has to be passed by?
Then they should have had it in to you in time enough for us to get it. Is how I feel about it. I mean, okay, if that came up. A special request to the council, like through a. All. You know, an email to all, there was absolutely no way around this. Could we consider this at the meeting? I would be willing to consider that, but as a general rule, I think it should be firm. Three days unless it's a really.
Dire, dire need.
I think an unintended consequence is gonna be more special meetings, because if you have something that's, that you don't get till the day after city council, you need to do the next week, and you're driving, and you have the three-day role, you're gonna drive yourself into a special meeting to get this one, as you pass, which you do, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, just be aware that that's gonna drive more special meeting.
Or it's gonna drive. Us getting the explanation on plan.
But a lot of times it's outside entities that want, that are endorsing something like that.
Yeah.
Very little, James has very little.
Yeah.
When that pops up.
The Forest Service said that to us last summer. With the endorsement for a grant support.
And any counselor can add anything to the agenda the day of.
True, but technically, I mean, I think we're all aware that it would be for discussion items, not for like.
Action.
Action. In most cases.
Yeah, staff has to do any kind. Researcher, staff important, yep.
I guess what I'm getting at is the way that it is, where did we break that rule all the time? So it doesn't make sense to me that we have that there when we're consistently not.
Well, could be. The goal to try to work towards achieving.
But if it's a rule that we should follow, then let's either do it or not, is what I'm saying. If we're gonna do it, that's why we're here discussing it. If we're going to say that it's gonna be a rule, but in actuality, we're not gonna actually do it. Why?
What are the consequences?
None. It's all us, then why have it as a rule? Why have it as a rule if there, if we're not gonna follow it? I mean.
Well, I mean, you can say that about. Most, most rules, yeah. Um, and not to flip it, but it's, you know, we really wanna lower the bar.
That's kind of the thing. What I'm thinking is like, it seems like we should have something to try to achieve, like work towards achieving. But that's my.
Well, then it could be reflected that way, too.
So you wanna look at the language and maybe make it a little more kinder and gentler?
Wow, we're saying it has to be kinder and gentler. I just think it should reflect what the actual intention is of.
Well, I'm, I'm sure his intention is to have it, you know, but in that, within that timeframe, it's just, you know, circumstances sometimes get the way.
I, I mean, I kinda like. Where is, is that exceptional circumstance? Because I think they want an exception circumstance, but maybe they're just special circumstances.
And, and if you got another city administrator following you, and you have to become the governor. It's going to be a, a brand new, you know, he's not gonna see anything in there, so he's gonna tell us. The end of the day, forever. At least to give some, you know, follow-on city administrators some guidance.
I think that we should change it to only an exceptional circumstances. Should we receive information any sooner than three days before the meeting?
It'll be fine with that.
Because you're right, right?
Any sooner or later?
Later, I think.
Later, three days prior, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, like, you guys are right. If the Forest Service comes to you the day before the meeting and says, can you get this signed?
This brand is, this brand is due.
Exactly what happened.
That's no problem. It's, to me, it's like getting a document that's fifty pages long over something that we need to review and agree to. Change a rule on or something like that.
I, I completely agree with that, because I'm like. A full-time job.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, can you, whatever. Get in a big document to review. We need more than ample.
Yeah, well then.
A minimum of three days.
Well then, I think, I think that it expresses that right now. That's the same unless exceptional circumstances arise.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Sorry.
Why do we need any word in there? Why not take exceptional out and say unless circumstances arise? And leave it at that? Do we have to have a word in there, like exceptional or special or, I mean, I think anybody? Possibly, myself included, would say, hey, you know, this is something special, so we need to do that. But why do we need the actual word in there?
Yes, I, I guess that would prevent us from arguing over whether or not something was an exception circumstance.
Daniel's scheme, so we couldn't get it when the three days.
Correct.
Yeah. Is that exceptional?
Depends on my skill level.
I realize this is probably nothing to do with this specifically, but the way we receive documents, like I've always. Emails, I was wondering if anything we would work on. Document control process where there's. The folder where, because sometimes it's like, in an agenda, oh, it's, okay, now there's revised agenda, oh, there's another revised agenda, and then there's another, like, and then the day of, there's another one. And, um, like, I, I'm used to having like. Patient where.
Yeah.
With archive folder, old stuff goes archive folder, the current, up-to-date stuff is in.
There used to be a city council folder, and probably still is.
Probably is. I can try to learn to use that, um.
Google folder?
Yeah. Yeah, but I think it's important, because I also have sent it to press, so I can get press access to that folder. That they might be going off of old information, whatever, I send them, because they have a standing request to receive.
Yeah.
With council package. And, but the, but the reason that happens is because. Yeah, I can normally post that stuff, but if it's something that comes in after hours, unless I'm willing to play her overtime.
Yeah.
To update it. She can't update it till the next day. But she's working.
Mm-hmm.
You know. And she doesn't work on Fridays or weekends.
Yeah.
No, I get it. I was just saying, like, a tighter process of.
I can, I can try to do that in practice.
Uh, the engineering means like document control of the current, up-to-date documents we should be looking at should be. So like, you know, just like, oh, here's much more of this, I'm supposed to replace this one, and this one replaces this one. I'm like, wait, which change, which one's current, you know?
But we do try to keep. Packs on the website, the city website. Aren't up to date.
Yeah.
So we don't, we just let's say, okay.
So if, if you're willing to look at the Google folder that is assigned to city council and, and give the admin rights, I will look at and see a way that we can organize that.
It doesn't have to happen. I was just saying.
Well, but it's, it's, it's a valid, valid project, I mean, uh. And. Can you handle if you can work with Google or not, but, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's my greatest tool, but, um, in any case, I, I could take it down and just.
We tried to do that. There'll be some issue with that, because I don't think I have the admin rights. To Google files. Elber does. Then I think she couldn't figure out who else does. And maybe Rick did back in the day, but.
I did it one time.
Yeah, you did.
Um, but I'll have to look in, well, you have to turn it around, that may be in that list of passwords.
Okay. But we can do that.
Yeah, and, and it's something that, uh, maybe.
So going back to this, do we wanna get rid of the word exceptional, leave it in?
I think it's okay to come out.
Unless circumstances arise.
Yeah. And did we agree yes on five days or no?
Um.
I don't know. I'm gonna hold my position, I just, I think it's a, it's a great goal. I, I really do. Would enjoy having the packet over the weekend.
I actually would, too.
We could go to six, and then we can do Friday.
Seven is Friday, I think.
But I.
But what it.
But what it says is at least that many days. So if you make it five. You could give it out at seven or eight or six.
True.
Right?
Yeah. But I wouldn't six days, because council meeting on Thursday, so if it was seven days before, it would be Thursday before. It'd be six days, but that would be Friday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good compromise.
Or. Yes, six to Friday.
I would like that, Friday, end of day, six days.
End of business day, or, yeah.
Or six days, even, even just right.
Can we just give it six days, but.
Yes. Yes.
The almighty, James.
What's that?
We have the almighty.
He does a lot of those.
Eleven fifty-nine. Member of the council wish you that night based on the agenda, she advised the administrator. Least. Days prior to the meeting. Again, it's conflicts with the standing. Orders and. Our rules, and say a counselor could put something on the agenda day of. But, um, Donna's suggesting we, we go back to. Five days, I, I would say it should be six.
I just think if, if it's an action item that you're gonna need to do some research or something on, you need to, I think you need to build you in, different failure, to build you on a day or two, whatever you think the right number is, make it.
It's, yeah, it seems like you.
Can we identify that, though, and specifically say if it is an action item, because there's plenty of things we put on the agenda for discussion? That don't require agenda, though.
We could add the word action. Before item.
So say, have an action item placed on the agenda, should advise a city administrator.
At least in this. If it should stay at ten, if it's an action item to give them time.
I don't know, do you need ten days ahead of your six? Or do you need?
Of course.
Four days ahead of your six, thirty-one?
That's a discretion easily. Yeah, this is easy.
Okay.
But allow me also say.
Yeah. It might be something that requires way more than ten days.
It would give him the power to say, no, won't be on here.
And that would be fine, I would think. If you can't, then you can't, but people should try to at least have it listened. One more.
Um, okay, then we have order of business, and there's a couple of suggestions. I think everyone is generally in agreement that the appointments should be moved up.
Yep.
Question is to where, um, one suggestion is to move it. Right after the city. Uh, administration, which we put attention to administrator. To, um. Personally, I can get you to go right after the consent agenda.
That's where I thought. My thoughts was right after the consent agenda, because normally when we appoint a new counselor, that's when we do that, and it seems to me that it makes more sense to make it consistent. Since, I know this is for committee appointments generally, but.
Force people to sit.
Exactly. Yes, and if the meeting run longs, then they don't get a chance to be appointed, which has happened many times. Yeah.
We didn't have people be here. Finally gotten to that point there.
Yep, same with on Zoom.
Did you suggest before consent agenda or after?
Uh, that was my suggestion.
I put it between consent agenda and business from city council.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was suggesting.
I don't feel that going there is anybody else. Concerned about that?
Any other? Adjustments?
James, I have something to ask. Reports of boards, commissions, and committees, could we move that one down to where appointments is? At this point, where appointments were.
So after, after public hearings?
After public hearings. Or even before public hearings, but.
I would agree to.
I would agree with Jasmine.
So do you want before or after?
To me, the reports are really important, but public hearings, that type of thing, um. Personally, I think that's a good thing to leave where it is, but.
And does anybody have any examples of what other?
I was gonna ask that, too. Can we?
I'm subjective on how you, uh, you know, there's some stuff that shows up in city administrator or city council business that could probably end up in other business, particularly if it was something that was brought up before. To me, it doesn't really matter, that, kill it if you want. Continue, catch all, like you said.
I guess we leave it off. I don't put it on the agenda. Unless we actually have something.
I was kind of always under the impression that this is a point where the, um. Presiding officer, the mayor would ask, is there any other business before we move into public comment?
Go to the order.
Anything that somebody thought of that they wanted to speak on before we go into public comment. But again, I mean.
That'd be worthwhile.
They've been moving on to page six. On the letter D of. Not suggesting. That we replace the last word in the letter C, that's currently considered, and that to add in.
Which one was that, I'm sorry?
Page six, letter B. The last word changing or considered as. I think considered has the same meaning as a word added to the agenda.
You're asking to change it to have it.
Yeah, inquiry if the council wants to add any items to the agenda, basically.
Mm hmm.
And. To me, the way it's worded means that it's up to the mayor to decide if we can add anything or not.
Well, it does say that the agenda is developed by the mayor and the city administrator, so I could see why that exception is there.
And that might you. Yeah, changing it to automatically having to be added might be in conflict with the current city charter.
But it doesn't, doesn't it also say that any counselor can add anything to an agenda?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so I just read that.
I mean, insulting charter, and there are competitive charters. I'm gonna go to make sure I'm not violating. So under chapter four, which is second base, uh, section sixteen, there's functions and council meetings and mayor shops, the chairperson of the councils divide over several deliberations. Mayor shall have authority to observe the order, enforcing the rules of the council, and determine the order of business committed on the soul.
It's actually what we just worked on, was the order of business.
In section five. D, at each regular meeting of the council, the mayor and each councilor member may bring up items not on the agenda. And send it on the first page, that's right here, page four.
Yeah.
Yes. Even like being considered as well.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to where? No, I'm looking at council rules, page four.
Yes, yes, it allows that to be right.
Yeah, but it's also in Robert rules, which we follow, that counselors are able to add things on the agenda as well.
Mm hmm. But at some point, you could continue to add things until you're at a four hour meeting and. It, to me, that's. Yeah, the the presiding officer needs to have some control over.
Although, the the according to the charter, the mayor is in charge of the order. So the mayor could technically, so any council member could add whatever they want, they can add twenty five things, but still up to the mayor, where things go in, so.
It could go. That's how, yeah. Mm hmm, if the meeting doesn't go along.
Yeah, it is. My only concern is, you know, we have rules for getting things to the city administrator in advance, if we can get on the agenda. And then just day of. I depending on who's on council, you know, they could flood the agenda with stuff.
Well, that's why if you put them at the end of the agenda, you don't get to them, and you don't get to them, so the mayor can choose to put that at the end of the agenda. If there's not enough time.
Well, and adding things to the agenda doesn't necessarily mean an action item either, could just be discussion topics.
Mm hmm.
Right, maybe we should delineate that you can't add an action item after.
It actually is already in here. It's under. I already read that.
It's one of those things, you know, they say rules are created. This, somebody abuse them. Uh, you know, I've worried, the only thing I worry about is. Somebody that's not. No, us. You can see council using a rule like that. I realize it can go in the end, but. Just being able to have at least some sort of control over that. Rules and regulations.
Mm hmm.
What do we want to do?
I like it the way it is, so maybe you want to leave that for further session.
I disagree, I think that it's really important that we allow counselors to be able to add topics to the agenda minimum for discussion, I understand if it's an action item. That it's important that we give our city administrator time. I could go through the agendas for the last year and bring up really important things, for instance, we have the crosswalk that was hit right before our last meeting, and I added that to the agenda. As a discussion, because it was a really pertinent thing going on in our community where citizens were really concerned. And they wanted some transparent information, and we were able to have a short discussion on that. In the meeting so that people knew what was going on, and I could come up with lists and lists of things that have been added that have been just fine.
But they were, that's the, that's the point, because it's they were considered and they were added, you've never been told no.
By you, no, but by prior mayors, yes, it has been told many times, no. And you probably were present there, you should remember that.
I actually feel like it, this last part should just say, mayor should first inquire of the council if any of its members have suggested additions, corrections or adjustments. And then. Leave it at that, so scratching the last. Few words also to be considered.
Of words.
I agree with that.
Which is the common practice right now, and.
I'm anyway.
I could go with suggested that, it's correct, so.
Yeah. The mayor should first inquire of council, any of its members to suggest additions, corrections or adjustments.
Yeah. Right that, James?
Yeah. Okay, on the public comment, now people had suggestions from there. Starting with item two, person wishing speaker in public comments must sign in speaker's roster. With uh, the false word. Uh, I think most people are thinking of you should just delete that. Because we are part of a state, want to have Zoom option, obviously, we can't. Sign in.
You know, other cities, you know, by chance, with the hybrid meetings. So, I, to me, it's impossible to, to have them listed there, but it's like you said to me, because you have people on the same that also want to talk. There's a little order.
So I agree with just removing number two.
So I guess the only thing is, is that um. While I agree with deleting. The signup. And I agree with deleting the person to state their address, I think they should state their city of residence.
I agree with anything sometimes, frankly, a lot of people.
I suggested them before, I think.
Yeah. They want to give their, people giving out too much info to, you know, they might not want. There's, yeah.
Right, I I I want from that.
Honestly, I agree, it shouldn't be a requirement. We have had members who insisted it had to be required. Yeah, and there, and we even had. A member of the public say, I'm not giving my. Date address because I have a restraining order against someone and they could.
Well, right now, they don't have to give their, since the speakers may.
Right, but the practice has just been for so long that a lot of people who. When they stand it, they don't know that they're not required to anymore. So. I don't know. Um, but. But I think it should.
Well, that's.
That will change.
You look at the sentence above that one you just pointed out, speakers shall identify themselves by their names and their place of residence, so that would be the town, right? And then the next one, you could. You can either leave it, because it's May, or you can strike it.
Yeah, suppose we we could just, yeah, we can that sentence speakers name.
Yeah, I think there's.
If, I mean, obviously, they can, they want, what I've noted to myself is that on the agenda, I need, I will need to update the agenda, because it says individual speaker.
Yeah, must be right. And maybe instead of place of residence, to be clearer, if we put city of residence, that probably, that doesn't leave them to believe that they have to state their address.
One.
So we'll just leave that. Um, and then the last sentence in number three will need to be changed a little bit, signing officer may allow additional persons to speak. If. We should just get to sufficient time is left in the thirty minute room.
Yeah.
I agree, it's sufficient, yeah, certainly, better than. Actually, the first sentence, generally, the speakers will be called upon in the order of the roster, should be deleted.
Yeah, but what number is that?
Four.
Do you mean the first few words of that? Of that section, section one?
And it says, speakers are limited to three minutes. And then, and then it goes on to say, generally, the speakers will be called upon in the order which they have signed in on the speaker's roster. So that whole sentence should be.
About just speakers will be called upon by the presiding officer.
Yes.
Yes.
And maybe this would be a good place to say. And I personally feel that people who made the uh. Efforts to come here, they should be called on first. And then, as well.
I know, I I don't think we should put that in there because. Like, if you're in the charter, the mayor just gets to do the order of the agenda.
That you might get someone that is on a Zoom because they're handicapped, and you might get in some real trouble if you start discriminated against someone like that.
That's true, I just thought it came up somewhere, someone.
Things someone did suggest. But yeah, I think we should just leave that up to the mayor, there's also what if he didn't see a hand on Zoom, he already did the Zoom ones, and went to your like.
Yeah, and one of these other councils, and I'm on the committee, we go back and forth, you take one from the audience, and you take one from the Zoom, and back and forth, and back.
Yes, so now I'm just wondering if we even need that last sentence, the presiding officer may allow additional people to speak because of who says. Presiding officer will call on.
Well, I think I can first time the thirty minutes.
Okay, so how do you have it all written now?
So now I have it as, uh, speakers are limited to three minutes, speakers will be called upon by the presiding officer. Speakers shall identify themselves by their names and their city of residence. Presiding officer may allow additional persons to speak with sufficient time left in the thirty minute period.
Well, it it does kind of not make sense, because I'm gonna keep calling on people until the thirty minutes is up.
Yeah, maybe just delete.
If hands were raised, you would continue calling on them, so that last part is kind of unnecessary, unless we just were to identify. That public comment period. Is is limited to thirty minutes.
Yeah, it's an article, it's an article one, though.
Oh, is it?
Oh, it is.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then delete the last sentence. I had pointed out in number five of that same section that we should change the word reserve to reserves, add an S.
Sorry, what number?
Number five, directly under number four that we just discussed. Okay, the council reserves the right upon a majority vote, just instead of the council reserve the right. And then number seven, at that same section. Let's see. Oh, I was thinking, uh. That we should be able to. Add something in here, allowing the council to ask the mayor to direct the C A to follow up. Or, it says the council will not engage in any discussion or make decisions during public comment. The council may take comments under advisement during council comments for discussion. And action at a future meeting.
The next paragraph talks about the direction.
Oh. Okay, I don't know. Scratch all, what I guess, yeah.
I think there's a lot of times that we also engage in discussion with people in public comment. I do agree with not making any decisions during public comment. There's many times where someone's walking and we ask for a follow up question.
So you suggest leaving the words engage in discussion or?
At least consider it.
I agree with um, number seven. Saying that the council won't make any decisions during public comment. But I do agree with that we. Numerous times, it's been really easy to just resolve something by, you know, asking a follow up question or.
Like if someone says. Percy, what time is the voting July?
Mm hmm.
And starting.
Well, just tonight, we had a a public comment about, um.
Yep.
And we all. And we asked a follow up question, are you referring to the poses or the? This or that?
Yes.
And we got it answered right here and there.
We have consensus on this?
I agree with that.
I, you know, I just, I'm afraid we'll go down a rabbit hole, and you're gonna do a huge enormous discussion, but that said, I think. We've been coming around to the point where I would ask the council if they're okay with permitting the person to speak.
You're talking about something different, though, you're talking about.
During the agenda.
During agenda, I want some public wants to interject, which is totally different. This is saying during public comment. The council will not engage in any discussion.
So like to me, true.
What if instead of striking eleven, we add the word lengthy? Council not that is lengthy, that's fine. You know, it all of a sudden.
Then if he but if he had a full chocolate block public comment period, if you're going to get into this big discussion. You're going to get to the point where someone's not going to have a chance to be in because they're going to get. You know, at the thirty minute mark, after you obviously going to go another thirty minutes.
So did we find a way though to word it so that it's allowable to do something very similar that we just did tonight? But yet the mayor has the authority to preserve order of this or, you know, the decorum and all that. So if it ever got to be out of control, the mayor could say, hey, you know, we need to stop and move on with business.
Yeah. So if you come up with some sort of line or just.
I'm suggesting we add the word lengthy, council not engaging in lengthy discussion or making any decisions.
I would I would agree too.
Yeah. On page eleven. Or in. Meeting times to. Six P M.
Yes.
Eight P M. Hey, now we're jumping to page thirteen. A lot of folks pointed out that. Under location, it says land activity center. And suggestion must change that to City Hall. My suggestion is. We change it to City Hall or the Land Activity Center because there's a chance that. The Land Activity Center might. Be remodeled in such way we want to use it, whether having changes in. Have the option City Hall or.
So putting them both on there.
Yeah, yeah. So council meeting show you how that. City Hall or the WAC. In the event City Hall and the WAC is not available.
I'm okay with that. I personally would not like to see it go back to the WAC because it was a huge hassle for staff and the back and forth and.
I actually would prefer that it only said City Hall first, and if there was ever any reason why we had to go to WAC. We would put notices here and say, hey, we had to go to the WAC for whatever reason. And if we decided to move to the WAC on a permanent basis, which I hope that God never happens, I agree with that. But if it did, we would then just update the rules to say we're at the WAC now. And there has been times where I've had to be at the school when there's a huge event, a huge, you know, community. Thing that. We accept a large amount of people. And so we wouldn't want to have to. Include that here. That could possibly be there too.
So then it should be other words in the event City Hall is not available. Or adequate for reading.
Signs will be posted. As to where the location will be held.
Where information will be on the agenda of the location.
Well, that that has to be by law. My my suggestion is should we add the words or have.
Or what?
Added.
So the event City Hall is not available for. Or as for the. Council shows a big number of anybody. Right now, just.
Yeah.
So we're striking WAC and putting City Hall only. The first one, okay.
And then we jump page fourteen. Under preparation and introduction of ordinances. For ordinances. It correctly says all ordinances shall for presentation to council shall be approved by the city attorney. That means. If you compare that to requirements for resolutions, which is on page sixteen. There. To be. For resolutions. It's been at least days. Something about it. If the C A thinks we need to be reviewed by the. City attorney.
Well, in in order that says you're you're actually writing law, right? So it to me, it makes perfect sense that you'd want then a city attorney to make sure that you aren't misguided in your. You're acting of that law.
Okay, I agree with that statement. However, are we practicing that? Did you do that? Do you do that on all ordinances?
I have. I shouldn't say all because there might be one that I didn't. I believe most if not all I have. But I don't always get a written in. So just, you know, that's a young spawn. Sort of thing, especially if it's like one is we're replacing another one.
Or you're using a. Template from another city or L O C or you think you know that they're lawyers that are looked at. But at least we can.
But like camping ones definitely considered here now.
So then in other words, once the council receives a proposed ordinance, it's already been a review and approved by an attorney?
Yeah.
Okay.
I usually know that, I forgot, I'm sorry, I usually know that.
But this does specify the city's attorney. Or there does it mean?
Isn't that?
I thought you said some of them have been looked at by other.
Yeah, what I'm saying is there are some cases where. There have been ordinances and it's all in some ways it's almost a waste of money, but.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying this here specifically says city attorney or the so I'm just saying that. I agree that we shouldn't waste our own city's money, but here specifically says. City attorney or attorney designate name.
Yeah, but I think that means the city attorney doesn't know that somebody else from his.
I know. Oh, I think what Brian is saying is in the past we've used ordinances and things like that that have already been reviewed by some other city and their attorney.
All I'm thinking is maybe just to comply with that, we just. Tell the attorney, the city attorney, hey, this has been reviewed by. This city's attorney, this has been reviewed by L O C. And let him know so his review time is probably.
Minimal.
Going down to five minutes instead of.
Yeah, they charge by five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, it's a hundred bucks.
Better use every every one of those fifteen minutes pound or no more.
Right.
Send us a recording and do review. Um.
But yours.
I just think if we got to a point where. Let's just say we used an L O C template and it was an old one and then we got into trouble. And they're going to go. Citizens are going to go, did you get this reviewed before you had it done? So I don't know. Is it worth? Just ordinances, but. There's not that really that many of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. We should check that long.
Okay. Well, the use of the word shall twice in this. Is we've done that. So all ordinance shall be for the council. Scratch the second shall.
Yeah, so did I.
Oh.
You don't want to do it, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it don't matter again.
Too much spell checks.
Emergency ordinances will be reviewed.
All of this is common before presentation to the council. Or the. Things.
And then the next sentence says emergency ordinances will be reviewed circumstances.
Well, you were meeting in an emergency meeting because of a wildfire. And we didn't have the time or stomach getting.
Would you have to have an ordinance approved that day though? We need.
With declarations, I can't think of any ordinances though.
Emergency ordinances, I haven't ever seen one.
We've had some pretty big events.
If aliens invaded, we didn't authorize it, didn't allow aliens. Inside the city that they had a. That disease that. State that humans.
Okay, you're right. But I don't know if all ordinances are required to be reviewed, then why would an emergency ordinance not be required?
I think it's all based on the timeframe that. You wouldn't, you you might not have the time to reach out to the attorney to get it done in time because you're meeting within, you know, twenty four hours. And maybe there's no time to get the city attorney there because it's a Sunday.
Can we change the word will to may? Emergency order may be reviewed. An example of emergency ordinance. And it should be considered emergency ordinances.
Oh, this is. Well, this is being reviewed by the attorney.
So maybe I should say emergency ordinances will also be reviewed by the city attorney circumstances. You see what I'm saying here?
Or maybe with the exception of emergency ordinances. Because wouldn't an emergency ordinance be something that we probably wouldn't be able to get the attorney?
Or how about emergency ordinances may be considered without. City attorney.
Maybe adopted, you know, that city attorney review the circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something like that because then we could always put that if.
Yeah.
To him and the following Monday and he said, oh, don't do that. Then we could update it and do a repeal and replace.
All right, it's seven oh three. So how do you want to proceed?
I'm fine with going on.
I am too.
Want to get it done. I agree.
That's all. You know, you have hard stop or turn.
No, it's fine, I'll go.
Now we're going to a cell major. Uh, under calendar of ordinance. Sections three C. Sorry about posting. So so at least only for reading copy of the ordinance by each council member. And recopies of the ordinance are available to public instruction in the office of recorder and then on its ordinance. Availability given by written notice posted at this meeting hall to other places in the city. Couple of issues there. Uh, one, I don't. I I think just copies. Available at City Hall. Is not only made up read copies. Available at City Hall. And I think we should say City Hall rather than the office of the reporter. And then.
Maybe to just eliminate the word three and put copies of the ordinance are available. That way, if two people showed up at the same time and said, I'd like to review this ordinance. There's only one there, you could say, let me just make a quick. On this standard, get another copy so you can both do it, but you're not required to have three on hand.
Are we okay with changing office recorder to City Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, we posted a copy of the draft ordinance on the website. You know that it does have that capability because you you can click whether it's ten passed or adopted yet. I don't know if it works well. All that way you could post the link to it and say this the ordinance is available here for viewing.
Well, it would be in the packet. And this on the agenda.
I mean, it eventually ends up there anyway. We're on the website, but.
It does. I just worry.
Virgin.
Yeah, I worry if like. Forget. Click it over and.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I was in particular wanting to scratch the two other public places because. City Hall is one of our locations and. We used to do banner bank and the post office, but obviously we're not doing banner bank anymore.
Right, technically you could say we have two because the. That don't hold the word outside say at all. So there's one. And two would be the post office.
No, this says posted at City Hall and two other locations. That one out there I would consider City Hall. Posted for someone to be able to walk up at any time and.
So you think we should say like at least one other from the place instead of two?
Yes. And this is only the notice of the ordinance, not the actual ordinance.
Right.
This.
Just we need to make sure that's. Complying with the laws.
Or we need to find another location post.
You ask one other thing, I want to do.
The old banner ring. Oh. Store. Well, why couldn't we say first?
I always felt like we should have one on the other end of town like the schools or something.
I tried to post. Put a stack once for the city.
You're right. I did too. They don't do that because it gets too much of a clutter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the library. It's.
No, it's open. I think it's I think the intention of this.
I was gonna say the fire department puts all the board meetings and council, all that stuff on the window. The very front door it could go there too. That's the other end of town.
Okay.
Um, that's fine because basically all that all that requires is. You have the agenda posted at.
Yeah, two locations.
So keep it to.
Yeah, we don't have to look up whether it matches a law or not or.
So would it be City Hall, fire department and the post office still?
Yeah, we just keep it at at least two other.
Only other place every. Think of it would be a good places honestly, a lot of people.
It's actually a good one, yeah.
The problem is is that the pharmacy has limited hours, they're not open weekend. And they're closed for lunch and I never remember it's a weird time and plus I'm going to have to drive over there. I need more money time driving around.
Whereas you can email it to Scott real quick and he can go real fast.
Sorry, I just I have flashbacks, but.
So it's City Hall and two other places.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, just internally, we all would know we're still going to keep the post office. I just think that one's really important because a lot of people read that. Raise is good.
Everybody looks at the review board.
And yeah, raise too.
Eight. Yeah, so number eight. So this this comes up for ordinances. And for resolutions. So right now when ordinance is rejected by council. Not be considered divided by areas, they're the ordinance, they're the rights, it's substantially the same thing, should be considered by the council for. Six months. So. I've already been with people about this before. My thinking three three tie is not a rejection. Other people believe this rejection because it fail. I think the simplest way to fix this is to add. Add the words. With four or more votes in opposition, that way it would read, when when an ordinance is rejected. By the council with four or more votes in opposition. Can't bring it back.
But I think, doesn't it say in the charter that? There's somewhere else, maybe it's. Yeah, there's multiple places that it references that it's a fail.
Well, it failed, but just say fail, here it says rejected. Well, rejected, and so it's confusing.
Then why don't we change it to say when an ordinance fails?
Because then it could fail, it could fail by a two to two. It could fail by two to two vote because three counselors. At Spain because there is something to the fire department or something. Or one one counselor's accident. Two members are on the fire department, so they can't vote, so now.
Only that pertains to money. And that ordinance doesn't pertain to money.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I I get, I get what, what this is for is to stop. Me being a jerk and keep bringing saying that horse back. After it's been defeated every single time, but we got instances where. It was a three to three tie because one counselor was out of town. Next meeting, they're they're here, so it could, it can pass or fail. Now that there's seven members, somebody's been great for tie, I don't see why we have to wait. Six months brings something back now, if it if it has been totally rejected by council or council saying no. Then it's done, don't bring it back for. Early consideration. No, because this happened. It wasn't even that, well, some of them were, so but. I mean, with. In fact, it may have passed, it may have passed like by three to two, but it requires four. I think that's what happens, so. You only have five votes on it, you get two people missing or something. It just seems silly to me, can't bring it back for.
And there was another tie that failed, I I I know that all of these things happen and. My opinion. Yeah, it fails, that's.
Yeah, because even.
System is set up.
Even in budget, we've had time, many things that have failed, that have tied in budget and we always consider a fail.
Sorry, not so, if we if we had the vote on the budget and we get three tie. On June twenty nine. Bring it back for six months.
Yeah.
Four months.
Four months, sorry, so.
Well, the budget's not an ordinance.
Resolution, four months.
It it like, the budget can be by ordinance.
Yeah.
So if if I, and it's the same rule of resolution too. The same rule, if if the resolution.
Is it four months instead of six?
Sorry, I think you did, sorry.
And you say the same about a supplemental budget as well, if it was rejected, then. You couldn't bring it back for four months, your operating. That guidance for four months.
Yeah, I just think it really. First operations. Because technically. Again, there could be a three to two vote in favor. Two people are absent. But. It was rejected, even though the majority, the president wanted it, can't bring it back for four months. Yes, as an exception for counselors addition. Consideration, but.
And there's also substantially the same provisions.
And why not just add it in there if. You know, if there was multiple members. Absent or something. That could be an exception.
I think these are ways to say if it's rejected by council with four or more votes in opposition.
You know, again.
This is four or more votes in opposition.
So if you have four more counselors saying no to something, that's a hard no. That failed. Don't bring it back for at least four months and I would be stupid to bring it back because I failed once.
Once you changed it significantly.
But doesn't it say multiple places that a pass is for? No matter what, four is four.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so it does define what it takes to pass something, you need for affirmative ups pass something. But there's, we don't have reject, uh. A. Definition of rejection. And to me, I think we should define rejection by being four or more.
Four or more votes against.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it might be easier to take the ordinance off the agenda if there's several absences? To. Keep that from happening.
Well, that's, some ordinances are simple, like, do we want to be part of? The county health plan or whatever. Even if we only have five counselors present, it's probably gonna be five vote.
Right.
I guess what about the option to take something off the agenda, if it's a controversial subject, if you know that and you bring and it's on the agenda. And only three counselors show up, or, well, obviously four, because you have to have a quorum to hold a meeting. It might be appropriate at that point to say, you know. Maybe this item should come off the agenda because I'd really like the entire council to review it.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was saying.
Let the council take what, you know, can make most of the table. And the fastest passes.
That's true.
If you had to work well, now with the votes, we're probably gonna fall.
Well, my suggestion still stands, my suggestion that we should. Basically define rejection as four or more naked votes. Because to me, that's a part of me three, three still time. Yes, in three, three is a failure, but I I don't think that that's a rejection.
But I can think of two circumstances where when they feel that. That I felt strongly that that was the end of it. And that it should be, it should not continue to come back. And.
Even if it just doesn't have an absence.
What if it was?
Well, I feel like that it would have failed even if that. Absent member would have showed up.
Well, but that's fine, so I would bring it back the next meeting and then. And there would be four votes in opposition.
Right, which is why I'm saying just. Don't present it to the council if you don't, if you don't, if you feel like it needs to have all seven members.
I guess I agree with that. So that business, yeah, I think you should be able to change the side. What's? Forward because. You know, some persons missing, right, and most actions are usually last minute. One sit or.
One, what if it is a three, three and a and one abstention?
Failed.
Yes, well.
Never fail, but I would say that's a rejection, I mean.
I would say it is a rejection because it's probably not gonna change.
Well, right, but I'm not gonna be stupid and bring the same thing back, knowing it's still gonna be. That would be wasting evidence time if I. If I kept doing that, bring it back every month, it's still gonna be three, three, one, three, three, one, three, one. I mean, I'd certainly fire him, I can't, you know.
Well, I think number seven, a permanent vote of four council members shall be necessary to pass some ordinance is, is, that's a firm.
That's for.
Item, right, so when an ordinance. Is rejected, obviously it didn't get four votes or it would have passed. Right? So, boom. It's reconsidered down the road unless four members decide to petition for early. Consideration.
But what, when you have two absent members, two people on sixth middle winter. So the ordinance passed three to two, well, it didn't pass, but they got a vote three to two in affirmative.
Those two people who are missing can join up with the people that voted for it, petition to have a re.
That is.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so I understand, is the process of fishing?
They would need to go to James.
Hey, James, form this one back on there.
It's the petition, it's not defined, but I would accept email or. And I would. Or four people come to me and I disclose that before I repeat, I will say, these four counselors, A, B, C, D, I have name.
Yeah, I think it would also be acceptable to you, for you to go to those other counselors that work on and say, hey, just so you know, this ordinance. Failed, if you, if it's something you guys want to reconsider, please let me know, I would like to bring it back.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
I do really see what you're saying, the only, I guess my hesitation is if you change this one. It makes it different from everything else we've all known, which is a tie is a fail.
Okay, I'm. Okay, all right, so next one, um. All right, come on, page sixteen. Your preparation and introduction. First of all, the. It would be. Should be two.
Yeah, instead of B one, one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Saying resolution shall be introduced by a member of the council.
About candy.
How about resolutions shall be introduced by a member, by the city administrator or a member of the council. Nineteen out of ten, they come from the city administrator.
So how about, so resolutions may be introduced by a member of the council, comma, the city administrator, comma. Or the city attorney. For action on social resolution on. Leashing of the reduction. But also, are we all in agreement that a member of council?
Why do we even?
Or the city attorney could bring a resolution.
Yeah, why do we even need that last sentence? Why not simplify and say resolutions shall be introduced by? The city administrator, city attorney or a member of the city council.
Yeah, I think that language is confusing.
Very confusing.
I think that the intention here is to. Uh, my guess is the part about introducing. Is the part of the meeting where. The mayor says, okay, we're at item five B, James, you want to introduce this and? And the C A. Uh, reads from his agenda bill. But in the case where let's say I. Created a resolution that I wanted the council to consider. And I'm the one who formulates the document and all that.
Or your committee.
Need.
Or your committee.
Or my committee, then it would give. Someone other than James the opportunity to do that introduction and say, this is what we'd like to have proposed. I can't see, I see the attorney ever.
So maybe.
Introduction to a resolution.
So maybe we change the verb introduce to present it.
Yeah, or I mean, isn't that? Introduces how. Isn't that how the mayor always says, James, you want to introduce this?
No, I'm not saying it, but.
Yeah, and I think, and. Over the years, other mayors have said the same.
Okay, well, I think they're talking about preparation, well.
Well, the one before that talks about preparation. The city, the city administrator shall review the resolution and necessary give their determination, submit a resolution to the city attorney for additional review.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so if the parks committee created a resolution. They would submit it to you, you determine whether it needed to go to the city attorney for review, and then you would hand it back to. Pacha. And you want to introduce it in the city council.
I still think we should change it, though, resolution shall be introduced by. City administrator.
I think.
Or a member of council.
I think we should remove the word shall, change if you can. And and I agree, may or may. Maybe introduced by a member of the council or the C A.
Uh huh, yeah, I like that, but this whole last sentence is really convoluted and not needed.
Beginning with except.
Yeah, everything after that is just. Probably.
I I think we should keep city attorney in there because there might be something just super complicated.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Or something that's going on with other cities that they're recommending we. Adopt as well.
Right, but the city attorney doesn't need to introduce it, the city attorney needs to potentially review it.
Well.
I might want to.
But they may, it says may. So it might be something where there's real technical questions. Yeah.
Um, okay, so resolution, they introduce a member of the council, city administrator for the city.
Okay. Anything else that's.
They also on page sixteen, the correction. On items five. You can change the ordinance to revolution. All right, and we jump to page one. Page twenty two, session one, A, two. Twenty two days, council discusses motion only after the motion is removed and seconded. I think it's just based on past facts, sometimes we start a session over, which is the question is.
I think we've been pretty consistent recently, but.
We have done a lot better.
I think it, it should either be removed or we should follow it.
Which is my point was, I think we had to follow it.
Let's follow. I'm using.
Okay, well, I can think of, and I can't think of the topic, but I can think of points where you have said since you've been there. We discuss this a little bit before we make a motion.
I mean, there is a judgment call there, if you're looking at something that's wide open. Item. That has many multiple options, which James has listed. To me. At some point, you probably need, after James' introduction, to have a little discussion. And then. Ask for a motion because there there are so many possible choices you could make.
I agree with that, so then I think that we should remove this rule. Or or remove the word only. The council will discuss. A motion only after the motion has been moved and seconded. So. Change it to.
Or you could. Add at the end, unless.
Chapter five, number one, question. Page twenty two of that.
Well, this point, I would just feel hardcore and say that we'll always do it.
Well, I agree with you, there are multiple times where there's multiple options and we need to have a little bit of discussion so that a person knows which motion they want to make. Then otherwise we're in that, oh, can we do a friendly moment, oh, I, amendment, I'm gonna take my. Off the table, then we do that whole thing.
That is true, because there are multiple. Possible motions.
Yeah, and I can think of one, um, a couple of months ago for the greenwater stage, you were asking for a certain amount and I asked permission to have a little bit of discussion beforehand. And I asked for a little bit more money in my reasoning because I also wanted you to get. Lighting.
Right.
And so then the motion was a little different.
So we could then add.
I think the general rule is good that we have. We make a motion. Second it and then discussion, but there are special circumstances.
So you should get his end comma, unless. Council agrees. Pre discussion.
Yeah.
Consent of council.
But yeah, but our mode, normal mode of operation is.
I mean, it's, they're leaving it open, so why even have it in there?
That's my point, I think there's value in the, in the point, but. We don't want to dilute it.
There are provisions for changing a motion or withdrawing a motion.
Yeah.
If somebody brings up a discussion, hey, I really think we should add more money to this.
Yep.
Then someone could withdraw and could use that motion.
To be technical. But now, so council will, I mean, especially the motion happens to move in second. Didn't touch a issue. So you can have, you get a discussion on the issue.
That's very lawyer.
Well.
No, a motion is, is, is encapsulating the issue. So to me, it's the same, but. So, so I would say let's, let's just enforce it the way it's written and if we have to withdraw the motion, it's easy, it's quick.
Okay.
Yeah, but if a motion fails, then we can restate another motion.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then now to item ten, it's not the consent calendar, it's the consent agenda.
Yeah.
All right, and now.
What does that mean? And hang on one second. The way this reads is the presiding officer accept for motions to accept the consent agenda. Oh, so repeats a motion, okay, nevermind, that is really different.
Then the page twenty-seven. Member appointments, I just want to correct the matter there, all appointments require since A four. Putting the votes. Uh, we, the reason we already A. On that, so now we tell when it's required for a revote. Um, non-success also under like this members of or some commissions to add, letter back to say something such as all citizens who wish to serve on a board commission, they must complete an application form before being considered. That encapsulate what you were suggesting, Dom, is that normally be considered, they must fill out an application. Rather than council just saying, hey, you're in the room.
Yeah.
And that doesn't include the, the background check, that would be after they're appointed. If, if so required, they're going to work in the library or something like that. Yeah, okay. Our folks are right with that suggestion, where we all citizens who wish to serve on board commission, they must complete an application before being considered. Yeah. Hey, um, going to page twenty-eight, we'll, we'll come back to this appointment, so that's a minute, but page twenty-eight, under the forum. Forum member B currently says members of council shall observe the form during meetings and shall not by opposition or actually delay or interrupt proceeding or will be to obey the orders of the presiding officer or the. Right, and so I think the word obey is, um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I did, we can change, follow, I just do the word obey. I, I think follows.
Yeah.
Okay, that takes care of. Those are news, we already did the order of things. And we already covered, unless there's more you wanted to fix, Brian, on, on the, uh, public. Good. As a department, I think we covered all your stuff. I think so. There's exception under chapter three, we wondered if reading things twice. It seems like a waste of time, being trying to sense it. It's my own, it doesn't have to be read twice. It's not title only, second time. I think it's worrying about the title only, this, that's a part. It's not for these.
And then it doesn't.
Quite a while ago.
No, that's only if it, and it doesn't pass unanimously. The second reading has to be at another meeting, even if it's by title only.
All right, so if we go to the agenda bill, I just want to, that I wrote, I just want to make sure that we cover all of these. Yeah.
We didn't cover the committee appointment.
Yeah, I'm going to get that, I was saving up the last. Okay, so we have, we have two issues left. Um. Uh, mayor's suggested adding, uh, so many and it's requirements, there, there are some attendance requirements on page thirteen. Mayor suggested we add something here that would require councils to attend city council meetings in person unless remote, remote participation is necessary for travel or medical conditions.
So what is, what section are we on? Page thirteen, looking at a very box.
Thirteen.
Oh, attendance.
Yeah.
Very bad.
I will make a comment on that particular item. Um. I agree to a certain extent, but if and I know that mayor, you probably hear from different people than I do, however, I personally, if people are in attendance, be it Zoom or personal, I mean, personally there. My opinion is they are in attendance and they're, they're voting, they're making comments. I personally see no issue at all with that. But that's my opinion.
I have a comment on that, too. I think it's kind of the way of the times and I go, I attend lots of monthly meetings that no one is in person anymore. The entire meeting happens from multiple people's homes and there are not, you know, fancy meeting rooms and things and um, so I do not have any problem with those types of meetings. I think it's out of convenience and many times more efficient and people are able to be a part of committees and groups and things like that. And I think that if we were to require that for our counselors, then we need to also require that for all of our committees. And I think that would be a really big hardship for people to, I think we would lose some people that do attend. Um. Many meetings on Zoom, so I would not be in favor of requiring that.
Obviously, after.
I said, I think we should.
Oh.
Yeah. Because those are also public meetings as well that have to follow Robert's rules and all of the Oregon public meeting laws that we have to. That's what I was getting at.
Excellent, kind of, action.
There may be recommendations.
They may write foundations, yes.
Yeah, they're considered Oregon public meetings, so I consider them the same, yeah.
Great. Also, um, I'll show out there that, that, but if we added that, that would preclude, uh, let's say a member of the community is handicapped that could physically bring a wheelchair in or something up into this stage and they wanted to attend, oh, but.
Well, that would be a medical. No, that, I'm sorry, that.
It's for council.
It's only for council, that, that role is only for council.
Not for attendees.
Just out of respect.
I'm talking about a count, whether someone who's handicapped in a wheelchair wants to become a counselor.
Right.
And then are they required to bring their wheelchair?
That would be a medical reason.
Oh. Sorry, so you're suggesting there would be a. I'm not, where is the proposed?
Say, I should, I can see. You know, Jane, I mean, I see the point. Doing it, if, you know, we're public figures. It seems like we should be at the meetings, being present in public, um, but I could see adding like me some stipulations of like, you know, oh, I gotta watch the kids or I gotta stay home because probably did watch kids or something, so something's last minute, I have to stay home, but adding more of this medical or.
But why should we have to add more stuff when right now we're all in attendance? I mean, I understand what the mayor's saying, but personally, I'm like, I know, like Chrissy has said, meetings are more by Zoom um, than they are by anything anymore. And we are public officials and I love being there. However, you know, there may be a time that I really don't want to be there because I want to put my jammies on. I don't care, I'm still going to be there. It's just I'm going to be on the computer, on Zoom. I'll still make the comments and everything else.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I think it is no surprise that I disagree with adding this. I don't understand why we would put in any rules that would preclude anybody from attending however they see fit. We all have a lot of things going on. We have jobs, we have children, we have our own businesses. I travel out of the city a lot and sometimes unexpectedly. Um, I don't think any of us should have to explain ourselves or justify our reasons for being on Zoom or anything like that. I think as long as we're in attendance, we're participating, we're voting appropriately and not having to continually be called on and not answer, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think also Zoom is a great way for people that might not otherwise apply for these positions or run for these positions because of these things. I think it opens up the availability for a lot wider group of people to consider these positions by allowing Zoom participation.
I agree.
I, my job's completely remote, I work at home. But I do have to show up once a month. I think, I think it's important for people to be face space every once in a while. Um, that's my, my opinion. Counselor Cooper?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I, I know it's better to be in person. I do agree with that. But there's many times that we can't be in person for, in my instance, I have two jobs. I have two daughters that just went to work. I have grandkids. What am I supposed to do? Discourage my kids from going to work by saying, hey, I can't watch your kids because I have to go to a meeting? I understand where you're coming from, mayor, I do. But also in my eyes, attending via Zoom is participating. It is showing my care for the community. It is showing that I am there.
Thank you. It's okay.
Um, I'll just add that, well, obviously I agree with what it ever's been said by most, um, so far, but I want to add that we have gone to the extent of adding this humongaloid TV, getting the proper microphone so that people can be heard.
Who are required to provide.
We were required to do all that by the state, so the Zoom is an option and that Zoom has to be an option for, um, our citizens. I think it should also be an option for our counselors. And I mean, they are here. That's how I see them. I don't think we need wire them to be in person.
All right, well, obviously that would sound miserably, so, um, we'll just take it off and I, my, my rationale is out of respect for my constituents is the reason I'm here in person. They can see me, look me in the eye, they can come up to me afterwards and, and have a discussion, whereas you click off Zoom and you're gone. And don't even know what you look like, so.
But our phone numbers and addresses are all on the city website.
I, I will say, I get a lot of emails and a lot of people say that the counselors never respond to them. They're, they're like, you're the only person who's responding to them.
So I get the same thing.
Yeah.
People say the same thing. I think we all get that. It all depends on people reach out to the people they want to reach out to.
Yeah.
Exactly. I also have to add to that, that, um.
We should all do that.
Goes out to everybody, so I'm seeing it go out, say that I'm.
Can I also add something?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just have to say that, um, I, I agree with you to a point, but, um, I talk to my constituents, our constituents all day long on a regular basis. I don't feel like I'm hidden from anybody. I don't feel like this makes me unapproachable. Uh, maybe a few people think it does, um, but I've also never had any of those people try to contact me outside of the meetings. Um, the meeting in particular where Gary Carl tried to call me out and bully me into justifying my attendance by Zoom. There was like four or five people in the audience and there was probably eighteen on Zoom. So I don't think that attending by Zoom keeps me unattainable or unapproachable to people personally.
Thank you. And like I said, this is obviously not going to pass, so let's just move on, James. All right, then our last issue is back to page twenty-seven. Um, doing the, how, want to be able to break the current stalemate of commitments to minutes. And for everyone to be, are, uh, attorneys on the, I'm going to introduce you again. Definitely with basically, we're on way to, uh, rest is, is, this.
So we're, we need to flip to chapter seven of the council rules. Page twenty-seven. It says the current structure of council rules creates a veto power for the mayor as it relates to appointments. I don't.
Correct, but.
I don't understand that. Where does it create a veto power?
Well, it has because, um, counselors, you know, it suggested a different appointment. Here's a beach to hear that.
But he.
It's, it's a de facto veto.
The, the attorney is saying that the current structure of the council rules creates a veto power for the mayor, so which part of the rules creates a veto power?
What James was saying is it's by default.
It's a fact of veto.
So the next line or the next paragraph says, under section nineteen of the charter, it is clear that the mayor shall have no veto power. However, the city council does have the authority to amend. However, the city council does have the authority to amend their council rules.
Well, so rule A, under appointments to boards, commissions or committees, says otherwise, unless otherwise mandated by state law, the mayor, subject to approval by the council, which is in general for everything, shall appoint members of any board, commission or committee authorized by the council. I mean that means says if the council doesn't approve it, then it doesn't happen.
Well, that's true. So if, if the mayor makes a motion to appoint Joe Smith to a committee and the vote fails, it can't serve on the committee. That, that fails. That's a big council approval. However.
Oh, that's members.
Sorry, sorry.
So personally, I think the confusion or the muddiness of this may be the word shall again, as we've ran into before. Shall appoint members of any board authorized by council. That kind of leaves the back and forth of if he tries to appoint somebody or the mayor, I'm sorry, tries to appoint somebody the council doesn't approve of, and then council tries to make a motion. That's where we were stuck at last time. It says here, he, the mayor shall, we can change that word to will appoint the members of any board authorized by the council.
So then in other words, that would leave it open for someone other than the mayor to make the. I think the confusion was on the recommendation.
The issue was is the mayor would not, would not hear the motions that were trying to be brought by council members.
Someone else.
The mayor doesn't have to hear that.
Sorry, what?
Mayor doesn't have to hear the motion.
Where does it say that?
Says our city attorney and then and in the charter. To nineteen. Yeah. Mayor shall appoint the committees provided by the charter.
Okay, so we go to the rules of council.
So.
Well, making the appointment is not making the motion. That doesn't. I, I just don't think anything in here says someone else can't make motion.
I agree.
They can make the motion.
But where does it say the mayor doesn't have to hear the motion?
Okay, so I hear the motion and then what happens?
The motion was made and seconded and then you denied the vote.
No, I mean, hypothetically, that happens and then, then what happened?
Then the point, if it, if someone else, the motion is made for someone else and it passes, then that person becomes.
And, and at that point, the council has made the appointment, not the mayor. Yeah, and, and it's.
No, the council's always.
Makes, the mayor shall.
So the mayor shall sign all of the resolutions and ordinances and copies of the minutes with approval of the council. So the council is essentially signing everything.
I mean, I'm just reading, you know, I just reading what, what the charter says and I'm, I'm enforcing what the the council rules procedure said. That's all I'm doing and I, I just, I see if you try to change the council's procedure this way, you're going to be in direct conflict with the charter. So maybe a bit more creative way that you can come up with, but I don't see it.
Okay, where's the conflict in the charter again?
Nineteen.
Which one? Section nineteen, the mayor, the mayor shall appoint the committees. Appoint the committees, meaning. Let's define that.
The attorney recommends the city council has the authority to amend their own council rules.
And in other words, my point is when everything is done by with approval of council, I mean, literally even this topic says with approval of council, then the mayor appoints.
Appoint and then the council approves. That's how it's supposed to work. Go ahead, Ray. And I signed the checks because you said that I can't.
But you didn't decide to sign that check on your own.
No, it's in the, it's in the charter.
You didn't decide who the check goes to or the amounts or anything like that.
Nope. Thankfully.
So there needs to be a steps to if the council disagrees with the appointment. It's the way I understand what the city attorney is saying.
Did he offer any suggestions? No, he did not. He just said we need to change the rules without being violation from charter.
My recommendation is view the language on appointments within the council rules.
I think the interpretation of the charter is being really overly thinking that there's more power than what it really is. Appointing is, in my opinion, just the the action of, okay, the council agreed to this, so now I appoint you, sir, to the, to the such and such committee. It doesn't mean I am the only one who can make the suggestion to support, to appoint you and the council has to agree to it or it doesn't happen.
I agree.
I think that it's very clear in the next few sentences, the camp, the mayor should have no veto power. And it doesn't say anywhere in the charter that the mayor is the only one who can make a suggestion who's going to be on a committee. I mean, we make members of the community apply to be on a committee. The mayor can't just say, you, sir, are going to be on this committee.
I actually went.
Right, but did he allow anyone else to ask to be on the committee? No.
Well, I think. Right.
There was.
I could have approached him anytime. And I wasn't.
I actually did in a council meeting. Yeah.
Yes, you did.
After you'd already turned down one, but let's not go there. So the way I see it is, is there's, we're going to have to find a, a legal way. And so someone's going to have to craft the language they think's going to work and then we'll have to give it the Matt Dolls from Sniff Test. What do we do?
Said a minute ago.
But, but, but we need that. I'll go back to.
Why don't we make a council rule that creates a definition for the sentence that says the mayor shall appoint? And create a definition for it and then have the council vote on that, whether or not they feel that definition describes that section.
Yeah, I we, what Nada said, I agree with her. We just need to change council rules. And make sure we don't end the charter.
Don't violate it. So we would wouldn't create in a definition for that part of the charter. Suffice not violating it.
Can I add something, James?
Yeah.
I, I know what, I see what everybody's saying and I understand, but the actual, the first sentence in, at least the way I read it, the mayor shall appoint the committees provided by rules of the council. So to me, rules of the council would be the council rules of procedure. Maybe not, but that's the way I read it. So it, the only thing we should need to do, or maybe not, but I'm not an attorney, would be to somehow change the rules of the council or the council rules of procedure on that particular thing to go with this. Or even change, well, we can't change, you know, I mean, we can change.
Yeah, you're right. You're correct, Counselor. That, that is all we need to do is change the rules. So I, I, what I'm suggesting, I'll go back to Matt. Ask him for suggestions on how to change the rules, on bend the charter, and I'll bring that back to council.
I think I have a way that fixes this. The mayor shall ask counselors for their interest on committees. And then that, that would be a rule that, you know, counts whenever it's open to who's going to be on committees, ask the council. If multiple people, multiple people want to be on a certain committee, then it goes to a vote of the council. And then with council's approval, the mayor makes the mayor signs off on the appointment. That would be the order of process.
I just feel like we're overthinking this.
Splitting hairs, really.
I think you're right.
Exactly.
So we should just define the process.
Right. I agree on that.
As for applications, vote on it and then the decisions. Sorry, not nomination or, yeah, nomination.
Interest.
Interest.
Maybe we should also add in here somewhere that the mayor has no veto power, like the charter says.
Yeah. I mean, we've repeated the charter multiple times in council rules.
Because ultimately, in my opinion, the nature of this is, besides keeping order and making the agenda, the mayor isn't essentially supposed to have more voting power or more say over these positions than the rest of council. They don't really have more power over these things and that's where this comes in. This gives the pair, the mayor, in the current opinion stated the power to say, no, you can't, you can't make that motion. You can't vote on that. And that's nowhere else is that given.
Mayor does have the authority to conduct the council to abide by the rules and parliamentary procedures. So yes, he can say no.
Well, correct, but it's your opinion that the charter says you can do something and we can change the council rules to what we want them to say.
Yep, you can nullify the position as much as you want and, and until the new mayor comes in and then you can change him back. When it's convenient for you.
Well, the mayor can't change the council rules on his own. On their own.
We're well aware of that. Okay, why don't I bring back options that we're not, we're not getting a consensus either. You know.
Well, I'm proposing that we draft an order of
Most sure.
And then, and then it says the mayor shall appoint committees provided by the rules of the council. So then in the rules, there would be a procedure that we would allow self-nominations. We would go through a voting process and then the mayor would appoint whoever the majority vote goes to.
And I'm totally fine with that. I'm just saying during work sessions, you can't, you can't have a vote on stuff. We're definitely not going to get consensus on this. So I'm saying.
No, I know.
Let's, okay, you drafted.
Take it.
And then the attorney, bring that back. It's a separate issue. What, what we have so far, if there's consensus. Changes.
I see what you're saying and bring it to council. Yeah.
All right, potato five. Ready to move on? Yes. All right. Public comment. Anyone left that wants to make a public comment on the Zoom?
Before you go there, I think there was, consider making changes to the rules. A public comment that Mayor Ketchin had said that.
Fixed. Um, I didn't hear anything for public comment. Motion to adjourn.
Was that everything? Did we, did we finish everything tonight? Okay.
I still moved.
All right, eight oh six.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.